I want to call to order the January 28, 2014 Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome you brave souls who have gone out in the cold and come here tonight. We have a somewhat fewer group than we generally have, but you're very welcome and thanks for coming out tonight in the cold. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on television, those who might be watching us on the computer, those who might be listening to us on the computer, those who might be listening to us on the radio. This is your city government, and we do hope you'll participate in whatever way works for you, so, welcome. Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll call. The council members?
Fitzgerald.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Tower.
Here.
Present, seven.
Okay, I want to ask everybody to rise that's here in the chamber. We'll have the invocation led by Councilmember Fitzgerald, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by our student here at the seat.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, our student's still here, she hasn't left us yet. Let me ask you a couple of questions here so people can find out who you are and a little bit about you. Why don't you give us your name, where you go to school, what year in school you are, and I understand you're involved in some activities at school, so why don't you let us know what those activities are?
Hi, I'm Alexis Kachubuski, and I am a sophomore at Oshkosh West High School. I'm involved in student government and FBLA and Camp National Honor Society and Spanish Club.
You're a busy young lady. We want to thank you for coming tonight. I do have a certificate for you, so let me give you the certificate. And again, thank you. We have a hand for our students. And we'll let her take off. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is we have two public hearings. I'll need to read each one of these three times. While I'm reading three times, if you'd like to come up and speak to one of these, please come up to the microphone and do so. Once I've read through them three times, if people have an opportunity to speak, we'll bring it back to the council. Ordinance 14-40, approve amendment to City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Land Use Maps, changing the land use designation of property at 2490 Jackson Street from commercial to residential. Ordinance 1440, approve amendment to City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Plan Use Maps, changing the land use designation of property at 2490 Jackson Street from commercial to residential. Third and final reading, ordinance 1440, approve amendment to City of Oshkosh Comprehensive Plan Use Maps, changing the land use designation of property at 2490 Jackson Street from commercial to residential. See no one coming forward to bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Sure.
Make a motion that we waive the second reading of the rules of the council so that we can go ahead and vote in favor of this land amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. I think it's a quality project that's going to be done on Jackson Street, and I think we should move it forward. And I know it has grant guideline implications to it, so I'd like to waive the rules for the second reading.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to waive the rules of the second reading and take action on it tonight. Last clerk, take the roll call vote. There are no comments on that?
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, we'll waive the rules. I'll ask for a motion for tonight on ordinance 14-40.
So moved.
Second.
Actually, we've moved it and seconded it, so we've waived it, so we're going to vote on it tonight. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the vote, roll call vote on ordinance 14-40.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, it takes us to Resolution 1441, approve final resolution vacating portion of 1800 Block of Oshkosh Avenue. Second reading, Resolution 14-41, approve final resolution vacating portion of 1800 Block of Oshkosh Avenue. Resolution 14-41, approve final resolution vacating portion of 1800 Block of Oshkosh Avenue. Anybody coming forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, bring it back to the council for a motion, second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion, this one? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-41.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is an opportunity where people have to make a comment, maybe a positive or maybe a suggestion for improvement in the city. This is what we ask, if you come forward to speak at this time, the microphone is open, we ask them up, give us your name, give us your address, limit your comments to no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council. There is to be nothing on tonight's agenda discussed at this point in time. If you speak this time, you don't get to speak later at the citizen's statements, and no electioneering. Anybody like to come forward? See no one coming forward? We'll move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of a number of items on which the administration feels are non-controversial in nature, and as such, they're submitted as a group and will be approved as a group unless either a council member or citizen asks that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda. What I'm going to do is read through these items. If you'd like to speak to one of the items, as I read that particular item, please come up to the microphone, provide us with your comments. After that, then we'll bring it back to the council for consideration. I'll start reading through now. Approval of bills presented by the finance director. Approval of cash report for December 2013. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from January 14, 2014. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Michael Lim, attorney for Citizens First Credit Union, in the amount of $35,506.15 plus interest for alleged excessive assessments at 2900 Universal Street. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company by Don Millis, agent for claim at Walgreens, in the amount of $90,743 plus interest for alleged excessive assessments at 905 Keller Street and 315 West Murdoch Avenue. Resolution 14-42, approve plan development for construction of multiple family development at 2490 Jackson Street. Resolution 14-43, approve bid for public works contract number 13-24 to August Winter &amp; Sons, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant control system, influent pumping and aeration blowers upgrade. Resolution 14-44, approve agreement with HD Supply Water Works for census, fixed base water meter reading program with hosted servers and five-year software maintenance program. Resolution 14-45, approval of amendment to engineering services agreement with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC for design of Southwest Industrial Park expansion in the amount $44,500. Resolution 14-46, approval of engineering service with AECom Technical Services, Inc., for stormwater management planning in the Stringham Creek Drainage Basin. Resolution 14-47, approval of initial resolution for special assessments, contract number 14-04, for paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, first local street concrete paving program, Northside Bowen Street. Resolution 14-48, rescind property taxes. Resolution 14-49, approve distribution of fist-gallup trust funds by Senior Services Division for medical services to income-qualified citizens. Resolution 14-50, approve combination Class A license and special Class B licenses. I see no one coming forward. As such, I will bring the consent agenda back to the council, and I'll ask council members if they have any questions they want to ask regarding items or want to pull any particular items. Okay, I'll ask for a motion and a second regarding the consent agenda and the package.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as provided to the council.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, next, that takes us to items removed from the consent agenda that weren't on, so the next item on the agenda is pending ordinance. Ordinance 14-51, approve rezoning 2490 Jackson Street from M3 General Industrial to R3 Multiple Dwelling with a planned development overlay. Anybody like to come forward to discuss that? See no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council.
So moved.
For motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I, just one comment, Mayor. I just want to make a comment. This has come in front of council on three events. I just want to clarify something. The petition or organization is Herman and Kiddo Properties Incorporated. I just want to make it known that that is no relation to mine whatsoever, and so I will be voting in favor of the project. I just wanted to clarify if anybody questioned it, that there was, the last name was the same as mine. There's no relation whatsoever. The company's out of Lake Bluff, Illinois, and the only relative I have in Illinois is my brother, who lives in Elgonquin, so, no relation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 14-51.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Takes us to new resolutions. Resolution 14-52, accept land donation from the Morgan District LLC for Riverwalk improvements east side of Oregon Street on former Jeldwyn property. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'll make one comment. In this case, I do have a family member involved, so I'll be voting present on this particular item. Okay, ask clerk to take the roll call vote.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
A present.
Oh, present. I'm present. Look at it, thanks, I'm sorry. Present, thanks. I need help. Who's supposed to help me with this?
I missed it.
That's the reason we have backup.
Six, one present.
Okay, thanks. Resolution 14-53, establish 2014 stormwater utility rate to $122.92 ERU. Anybody like to come speak to that? No, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question of Mr. Potek. Just for the citizens that might be listening, and they look at their water bills and things, could you just explain a little bit what the equivalent runoff unit is? Because that's what we're charging the citizens. That's the rainwater that comes off of their property, or roofs, et cetera?
That's correct. There's a calculation. I think if you look at the last page of the attachments, there's a chart we put together.
Yep.
And we had done a calculation of the size of, average size of residential properties in the city of Oshkosh, and our value is 2,817 square feet. We also have a range. I'm not sure if Mr. Gode remembers the different ranges. I know we have a small, for smaller properties, I think it's like three-quarters of the area, and then we have a large size for people that exceed the typical value here, so if you have a larger home or more impervious on your property. So we, but this is the value shown for the typical normal residential home.
Correct, okay. And then, we do have that rain barrel program for citizens that want to get a...
We have a credit program. Steve, want to comment on that a little bit?
We have a credit program. It extends beyond rain barrels. You can get it for rain gardens, barrels, anything that you do on your property to help control runoff or pollution control that leaves your property, residential or commercial, can apply for a credit and have their rate reduced.
Okay, and that information is outside your offices or on the city website?
I believe there's a link on the city website. We have it at our counter. I believe there's some outside of our office as well. So contact Engineering Division, we're happy to get it to you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any else, anything? Yes?
I have a question for Mr. Gode. In our stormwater utility discussions, we had talked about the elimination of, delaying the Washburn water quality basin and reducing the rate to 12146 for 2014. As this proposal is before council here, it includes that basin in our, in the proposal. Can you elaborate on staff's decision to bring it forward as the CIP proposes with the note about the stormwater board and why it was continued in there?
The capital improvement program was approved by this body, the council, previously. In order to fund those projects as they are in the 2014 CIP, we need the rate as it's proposed to 122.92. If we were to delay the Washburn project, which is acquisition and design engineering services, it is not actually the construction. It's two rather lengthy steps that we need to do to be able to get to the construction of the basin. That would remove about $500,000 of expense from this year's CIP, lower the rate to the rate of, I believe, 12184. Council can do that, however, staff's feeling was, the council approved the capital improvement program as it was. We are well aware that the water quality standard has been, the 40% has been delayed or repealed by the state at the time, however, there is a study ongoing of the Fox River Basin right now to implement a total maximum daily load. That is approximately four years out, probably two to four years out from adoption, and we're looking at potentially a higher than 40% reduction requirement coming out of that. We did not feel that getting put behind the eight ball in that pollution removal later on is something we wanted to recommend to the council.
Okay. Any questions? Not answered question?
That answers my question. I just, I know we had a rather lengthy discussion in the stormwater utility about these impacts, and I just wanted the council to know as well as the citizens to know, these discussions are ongoing, but looking four, five years out, staff's looking at these things, they're still going to come into our, into play, and let's focus on that now and not fall behind the eight ball and end up costing ourselves more in the future.
Okay. Any other comments on this? One comment I will make is that the 100 and 22.92 is a fairly significant increase. I think it's like 15% or something like that.
I think it's about 13%.
It was, it was about a, about 108-something last year, 106 or 108, as I recall.
As part of the memo, it indicates that it was...
Just shy of 108.
Just shy of 108, so...
About 13%.
Roughly about 108, so, is an increase, but this is money that's really necessary in terms of taking care of our stormwater problems in the community. Money that's necessary to protect the community, protect homes, protect the community in general. Unfortunately, there are a lot of costs involved in these projects, as has been indicated, some very heavy costs, and so we have to pay for it over time. So it is a significant amount of money, a significant increase, but it's for the protection of the city and of the citizens and of their homes, so keep that in mind. We'll probably see some further increases at some point in the future, unfortunately. But hopefully, we'll keep it down as far as possible. I know the folks are trying to keep it down as far as possible by looking at the actual cost and then calculating what it is with respect to what we actually have to do, as was pointed out before. If we don't take actions, we put them off, it's less, but then we don't have actions being taken that we need to get taken, so... Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-53.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, that takes us to new resolutions. The first resolution, Resolution 1454, approve budget adjustment in amount of $73,000 to fund additional personnel costs authorized by council. Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? See no one come forward, bring it back to council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I'm just looking for some clarification, and hopefully Mr. Roloff can provide it. I want to ensure that we're not going to be, this isn't going to have any impact on street lighting itself as far as the operations of streetlights in the city. When I, when I first, I guess back at the late November budget meeting, made the motion to reduce the pay raise to city staff, which ultimately led to some of the confusion a few weeks later, I did so with the intent of preserving that $35,000. My understanding is that this is a savings, but it's not going to affect us operationally. Is that correct?
It will not affect our operations at all. PSC has actually reduced, or actually, the rate increase was less than what we were anticipating that the PSC approved. So it was actually very good news, and Mr. Strong provided that information just prior to his departure, so I feel very confident it's not going to result in any reductions in service. This is going to be pure savings due to a known quantity for our electric costs for 2014. Thank you.
Any comments? I'll make a comment. I'm going to vote no on this. As I've indicated before, I think this whole process that we've gone through has kind of been appropriate, should have been done back at budget time. I disagreed with the substance of the issue, the adding the 1% to what I thought was a very, very fair, reasonable, and highly competitive compensation structure. I also disagree with the specifics of the adjustment. The adjustment was to be 108,000 originally. Administratively, a couple of weeks ago, it got reduced to 90, need for $90,000 in adjustment, and a couple of weeks later, now we're down to 73,000. And with the items that are here that we're adjusting, they're essentially administrative adjustments to accounts rather than any decrease in any real budget. They're just, there are some uncollectibles and some other things, and so we're really just changing some assumptions regarding things. Or there are some savings in general, I think if you have savings or these kind of adjustments are necessary, they're kind of one-time savings, and so I think they ought to be used for kind of one-time things, not put into the regular budget, the structural budget, so if this adds to structural deficit, so I'll vote no. Anybody else? Okay. I'll ask for the roll call vote on Resolution 14-54.
Fitzgerald.
No.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
No.
Carried 5.2.
Okay, Resolution 14-55, disallowance of claim by Christine and Domestic Abuse Services. I see no one coming forward. Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I will be voting present on this as I have a relationship with Cadace.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Any other needs? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-55.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Present.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried six, one present.
Okay, Resolution 14-56, support the Community Access Preservation Act, the CAP Act. Anybody like to come forward? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Herman?
I'd just like to make mention, I'm the one that brought this resolution forward. It has to do with supporting federal legislation that could get some financial assistance to our community access television channel along with our cable TV, radio station, excuse me. So I think it's important that we support this legislation. I think it's been proven over the years that our Oshkosh Cable Media Services is a valuable tool and asset to the citizens of Oshkosh and to our staff in getting information out to the taxpayers. So that's why, when I saw that Senator Baldwin was proposing this resolution bill in the legislature, I thought it was important to support it on a council level. Thank you.
Other comments? Seeing none, ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-56.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, then we move to council discussion. Direction of the city manager and future agenda items. Item 23, having to do with the 2014 goals, the city manager has been withdrawn. I'll put it in the agenda here. Next item is future agenda items, a workshop to discuss special events policies to be determined. We had a special events workshop a couple of weeks ago, and the outcome of that, a couple of decisions, and the other, the second outcome was to have another workshop in the future to discuss some other items that came out of that particular workshop, so, any thoughts on when this might occur?
Staff's going to be having their special event review committee on Thursday to go over a lot of the follow-up items that came from that meeting. They actually met a little bit previously, so they're going to be going over it, and once we have that, I think we'll be able to provide some ideas to council on where we believe we should go next. So you'll be getting it within the next couple of meetings, I would imagine.
Okay, so you'll look at a date. I assume this probably is going to be before a council meeting?
Yeah, that would be our expectation.
Or will it be determined at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, council member announcements and statements, correction to Northwestern Commentary on January 22, 2014. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was disappointed in reading it. Normally, I don't, I kind of read the editorials and the commentaries and don't get too concerned about them because of the information that's out there, but the one that was on Wednesday, January 22, it was a commentary, and it was by a gentleman who is a columnist for the Northwestern Commentaries, had a lot of wrong information, and it just really bothered me because of the fact that the information was out there for the citizens, and what he stated in his commentary was just wrong information, so I'm going to kind of refer to Mr. Roloff for some of the corrections. For example, East Parkway is in our 2014 capital improvement budget, correct?
East Parkway is in our 2015.
Excuse me?
And West Parkway is in our 2014, so Parkway from, what's the western terminus this year? Is that central or...
Central.
From Main Street?
Not quite to Main. Doesn't make it to Main, but...
The eastern terminus this year?
No, the western terminus.
The western terminus this year is Frederick Street.
Frederick, thank you, that was it. Frederick, all the way over to Main. It's going to get done in 2014, and then the area that was discussed in the article was east of Maine, east all the way over to, I believe it's, is it Bowen or the Trax? Is it Trax? It's in the CIP. That's 2015.
It's up to the limits where we ended the project a couple of years ago.
There you go, yeah. So that's been in our drawing board for a number of years now, so it's always great to have an opportunity to point out when we are getting these projects done.
Right. I guess just for the citizens that might have read that, that we might have made a change, and we didn't, and so we're getting their streets done in 2014 and 2015. Then he also kind of talked a little bit about our housing standards and overlays. We haven't approved them yet, and there's been a lot of discussion, and that's been out there too, so the information that he provided in his commentary was wrong, and I guess, might I just give a little update, maybe where we're at with the housing codes and the overlay?
Sure. With respect to the overlay, one of the issues that's been coming up, it's kind of a chicken and egg issue, which one do you do first, but I think staff felt it was appropriate to get the standards out there, but there is acknowledgement that there will be some areas that will be in need of assistance should an overlay district be created. Again, that should an overlay district be created, and if it's created, there might be greater standards in that area, and the whole idea is, can we create appropriate incentives to assist people who may not have the necessary means to do that? Staff is working on that. There is a couple really great ideas that are out there. The council had given me a goal last year, Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, and Mr. Burridge, Mr. Davis, and the planning and community development staff are working on those, and they'll be rolling out relatively soon. Some of what we've talked about with some of the retiring TIF districts, one of the items that was in there was, the last year of a TIF district, monies can be set aside for, is it affordable housing or low and moderate income, exactly along the lines of what Deputy Mayor Herman's talking about. So we do have those tools that are in the works, and I would say that by the time that an overlay district gets created, those incentives will be available... an overlay district gets created, those incentives will be available and ready. Their staff will be ready to roll them out at that time. So, appreciate having the opportunity to clarify that information.
I just think it's important that we, as a city, we as a council, get, make sure we get the correct information out to our citizens, and like I said, normally, I don't take too much concern on commentaries or letter editors, but when we had just had all that information out there and discussion in the budget, the capital improvement budget, I thought it was important, plus a workshop that we had on it. So, thank you. That's it?
Just one other thing, and one thing that should be pointed out as well is that if and when these design standards and this new zoning is approved, the city is not making the citizens do anything to their homes. It's not like all of a sudden you will have to replace windows, you will have to do this, you will have to do that. That's something that was kind of implied in this article. It's simply that, excuse me, any future changes to your home will have to be under those standards and the possible overlay. So, it's not like when these go into effect, you're going to have somebody coming and knocking on your door and saying, here's what you will do. So, you know, there was that impression from that article, from that commentary as well.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. If not, that takes us to the second opportunity for citizen statements to the council. If you'd like to make a statement to the council, please come forward to the microphone, provide us with your name and address. We'll make your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak to the council. Nothing on the agenda should be commented on, and no electioneering. Anybody like to come forward? I see no one coming forward. So, now we're to the back to city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items, item 26 and 27 have to do with purchasing items. We've gone on the, piggybacked off the state's bid for personal computers and purchased about $32,000 worth of computers, which was all in the 2014 budget. The contract assessing for commercial properties, we've renewed our contract with Tyler Technologies, also known as CLT. We had a good experience with that. We had some additional services we wanted to incorporate in there to make sure we're getting the full range of services. So, there's a slight increase. That's all budgeted. That was all, we knew that coming in when we did the budget. So, we got those two issues. Speaking of residential design standards, I just wanted to, maybe this was an item for future agenda items, but the Plan Commission held their public hearing that was required of them last Tuesday, and they did not take action on that. I think they wanted the opportunity to listen to public input and mull it over, and so our expectation is that they will be taking action on that at the February 4 meeting. Assuming that that takes place, council pretty much has the prerogative as well. How much time do you want to pass between that? The Plan Commission had a formal public hearing. Council doesn't have a formal public hearing, but you inevitably take public comment even though it's not under the guise of a formal public hearing. Normally, that would be two readings because it's an ordinance change, so you're really looking at two meetings at which it would be discussed. We could bring it to council on February 11, a week after the Plan Commission does, or carry it out another two weeks to give you more time to mull over what may or may not happen at the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission may or may not make some changes. You were at the workshops. You heard some different things getting bounced around. You've been contacted by people with some input, so there may be some changes that you may not be aware of, or at least you won't know until the Plan Commission lays them out for you. So, I'm kind of throwing out to the council what your pleasure is with scheduling it for future meetings. And Mayor's going to have some scheduling conflicts in March, so want to make sure that we're accommodating the council because of how important an issue is.
People's thoughts?
My thought is, you know, obviously, spring is a busy time for construction.
Not sprung.
And homeowners will, you know, be starting to probably get their projects started and that. So, I would like to see it sooner than later. So, if it moves forward out of the Planning Commission, I think we can bring it back to council. Council, like you said, had a workshop on it already. We're pretty much aware where it's at, and I think we could do it in February.
I agree with Deputy Mayor Herman. The sooner the better.
I would agree as well.
So, our plan will be bring it to first reading, which you always get input anyway, so you'll get input on the 11th and then final adoption on the 25th, assuming that's council's pleasure at that time. Very good.
We're all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Works for me also. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. I, in my newsletter, I put a couple items regarding the divestment policy that had been proposed by the Sustainability Advisory Board. The reason I wanted to put it on the agenda was just, again, discussion on where we want to schedule this. And I look at it as kind of three options, and I've gotten some input from council members. You know, one option is put it on the agenda, thumbs up, thumbs down, or amend it. That's certainly one option. Another option is to refer it back to the SAB. It appears as though it was something that they had seen other communities do, but there was no background about the whats or the whys behind it. And then, the third option is, you know, we have had the Long Range Finance Committee on hiatus in the absence of a finance director, but this is something that is certainly a policy issue. I think Mr. Peck believes the Long Range Finance Committee is more than capable of perhaps addressing that issue. So, a third option is to refer it to Long Range Finance and/or both back to SAB, but I wanted to get it out there for council to at least provide direction on how you wanted to schedule this for a future meeting.
Peck, I see you pulling your microphone over, so I assume you have something to say.
As the Chair of the Long Range Finance Committee and the council liaison to the SAB, I would like to suggest that we refer this to, refer it back to the SAB, and then also, I will schedule a meeting of the Long Range Finance Committee to discuss this. Now, I would assume my colleagues have all reviewed the policy. There are some issues related to it. It's specifically worded that no direct investment in, you know, we can't bias, is that they, no direct investment, i.e., purchasing an individual stock related to fossil fuels. However, the city's investment policy, we don't buy individual securities. We buy funds that are based on whether they be actual, a group of stocks, whether they be an index or whatever. So, that creates some issues, and I know that Mr. Roloff and I have talked, and there may be ways of directing our investment advisors to work with us or to seek investments that would minimize our exposure to carbon and fossil fuel and that type of thing. The concern I have is that we, you know, it's, the policy as it's written is a very good policy. It, you know, I think everyone understands the impact of burning fossil fuels on the environment, but we have to balance that social good against the economic and cost benefit based on what the city does. We need to maintain our fund balances. We need to assure that we have an adequate return on our investment and that, and then also, if there's an increase in cost in managing these funds of trying to find funds that are not invested in these, there may be an additional cost. So, I know Mr. Roloff is already working on that, so I would suggest that we refer it back to both the SAB and the LRF.
Others? Just go ahead and speak.
I would agree. This is one that, it's a discussion that has significant financial implications, and I think it would be irresponsible of us to vote on anything that hadn't gone through the Long Range Finance Committee with something that does really affect the city long-term, short-term. I understand the motivation behind it, and I understand the environmental implications of such, but I think it's important to have both committees look at this so that we do make the best decision possible for the city in the short term and the long term. So, I think it'd be smart to have the two committees look at it and give us a proposal based on both the financial health of the city and our commitment to the sustainability side of this as well.
Yeah. Ms. Osby?
I had talked to City Manager Roloff on this, and I appreciate where the Sustainability Board is coming from, but there's also a reality in it, and it's talk, we're more talking about risk and return, and where we do control certain things when it comes to individual stocks or bonds of companies that may have fossil fuels. You know, the way that we're structured in the city is we don't have our money in one pool, nor do we have one advisor. You know, our money is split amongst two, three, four, three or four different wealth managers. When you have mutual funds, we could pass this through, and from a conceptual standpoint, we could let the four advisors know. However, they could take a look at that fund, and it could, at that point in time, maybe not have a Chevron, an Exxon, a Mobil, but within 30 days, 14 to 30 days, that could change without notice. So, in some ways, what is being asked is not necessarily attainable just through the way that mutual funds are structured through the various companies. Part of the reason for the heavy returns that we've seen as in like last year is if you look at a lot of the portfolios and you look at a lot of the different mutual funds, unfortunately, fortunately, a lot of fossil fuel companies are in there because they're stable. So, we can certainly look at it from long-range finance standpoint, but I think we also have to have a reality of what's actually really something. It's different when you have an individual investor versus something of our size and the way that our trust is structured. We have $7 million, and it's in various, as I mentioned, wealth management companies.
Other comments? Anybody else? And then, just also, as those things are coming up, what is going to be the impact? We're asking the financial impact, but also, what would be the environmental impact of not investing in those companies as they affect the community?
Well, and again, too, you know, fees are based on, and those are negotiable, and so we could do a financial impact, but again, that could change just like that. So, I also want to be cognizant of, you know, the long-range finance, because long-range finance has been on a hiatus, we're going to have a number of tasks also. So, we have to be cognizant of the amount of time that we're spending on that versus some of the other projects that we will have as well.
I'm just saying, we also like to know what the actual impact of this thing would be, not only financially, but in terms of saving the environment. Okay.
The...
Anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I assumed that you were done. I had one more thing.
Okay.
When you're done with that, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
We're good. Okay. Then lastly, 2014 State of the City, want to just get, start promoting it. It is Monday, March 31. Question, it's a little later than this, than it's normally. The reason for that is we have found great success in people coming to the event when we sort of co-promote this with the Community Foundation's Salute to Education, which they hold at 4 o'clock at the convention center in the adjoining room, and it's amazing the number of people we're able to skim off as that event ends, and ours is just kicking up. The atmosphere that we have at the City Exhibit Expo gets a lot of people coming in, and we've had a good deal, number of people come in and stay for our event as a result of that. So, we've been making sure with the foundation that we've got our dates squared away. For whatever reason, it's a little bit later this year, so that's the reason we're doing it that way. I am hoping to find a creative way to engage the council members a little more. Don't worry, I won't be doing any of the bobblehead thing. I nixed bobblehead, bobblehead night is done. I try to get a little more serious, but also engaging. So, I'll be talking to council members, or Emily will be talking to you in the next couple of weeks about arranging something.
Please don't ask us to sing or dance because we prove that we can't do that.
That's Mr. Furlough's department, not mine, so I'll let Mr. Furlough deal with that one.
Mr. Roloff, what time will that be?
We will open the doors at 6:00 PM. The presentation will begin at 6:30, hopefully run no more than an hour after the awards and that, and then 7:30, 8:00 o'clock continues the exhibit expo. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor and council.
Okay. For a motion to go into closed session, I'm going to refer to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that following adjournment of this meeting that the common council may convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin State statutes, for the purpose of negotiating the acquisition of public property located at 43 East 7th Avenue, where competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session, and pursuant to Section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin State statutes, to discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, ask Cork take the roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Allison Osby?